Good morning, Public Hearing of Chicago, 2019. Chair Carroll, Commissioner Wood, Commissioner Jacob, Commissioner Chen, Commissioner Devonshire, Commissioner Goldman, Commissioner Russell, Commissioner Hopeless, Commissioner Luddy, Commissioner Benner, Commissioner Ball.
Good morning, Commissioners. We are going to calendar 12, uh, 12, 5. Sorry about that. The links are here in this row. We are going to calendar them together, so I'm just going to read each item into the record, and then I have a brief intro for you, and then our sabbaths and Sammoses will give you the presentation. So these are items one, LP 2626, 47 West 28th Street Building, Tin Pan Alley, 47 West 28th Street, Manhattan, Block 830, Block 11. Item two, LP 2627, 49 West 28th Street Building, Tin Pan Alley, 49 West 28th Street, Manhattan, Block 830, Block 10. Item three, LP 2628, 51 West 28th Street Building, Tin Pan Alley, 51 West 28th Street, Manhattan, Block 830, Block 9. Item four, LP 2629, 53 West 28th Street Building, Tin Pan Alley, 53 West 28th Street, Manhattan, Block 830, Block 8. And item five, LP 2630, 55 West 28th Street Building, Tin Pan Alley, 55 West 28th Street, Manhattan, Block 830, Block 7. And the items proposed for the Commissioners' calendar is an Italianate, our Italianate row houses constructed since 1854 and 57 with commercial operations. The house's music publishers at the turn of the 20th century, part of a block known as Tin Pan Alley. So we really are delighted to present this row of intact buildings on West 28th Street. They have incredible cultural significance related to a period of the turn of the century when this block contained a concentration of music publishers who revolutionized popular music and how it was created and sold during a time before the use of radios and inhorn phonographs, when people bought sheet music to play music at home on their pianos. We'd really like to thank the 29th Street Block Association and Historic Districts Council for their advocacy on this, and the input of historians, John Reddick, Andrew Dolcardt, and Dana Freeland, and also the strong support of the Speaker, the City Council. Designating historic landmarks with cultural significance brings up challenging questions related to historic fabric dating to the period of cultural significance. We did a lot of in-depth research, as Sarah's very thorough presentation shows, and determined that these buildings retain much of their façades and historic fabric dating to the era of Tin Pan Alley, and together they represent a very important history. Presenting is Sarah Moses.
Good morning. Between 1893 and 1909, this section of West 28th Street between Broadway and Sixth Avenue was home to the most significant concentration of sheet music publishers in New York City and became known as Tin Pan Alley. Here, these firms published some of the best-known hits of the time and revolutionized the music industry's practices for the creation, promotion, and consumption of popular music. The proposed landmark sites are shown in red. The proposed landmarks were built as brownstone row houses in the 1850s. In the 1890s and 1900s, they found new lots as songwriters and sheet music publishers offices when the area around Madison Square became the city's entertainment district. The city's entertainment districts arose in Lower Manhattan as a loose constellation of saloons, theaters, and other venues. As the city grew, this informal district began to consolidate and move north. Tin Pan Alley arose at the height of Madison Square's tenure as an entertainment district. In addition to the theaters visible along Broadway in this 1899 atlas, saloons, department stores, and entertainment venues became avenues for Tin Pan Alley's publishers to debut their new sheet music and were incentive for publishers to locate here. During the Tin Pan Alley era, for the first time in New York City, music publishers consolidated as an industry in one area where they could dispatch their latest sheet music to venues nearby. Tin Pan Alley was distinctive in its concentration of music publishers in a close cluster highlighted in this iconic row rather than in more insular offices. While a number of recording and playback methods were invented before the Tin Pan Alley era, it arose at a fleeting technological moment when recordings and record players were only first becoming widely available, and the music industry was still built around sales of sheet music to be played at home on piano. Despite the later application of the name Tin Pan Alley to the entire music business, this original Tin Pan Alley was built around sheet music at a time when recordings were still prohibitively expensive, of poor quality, and more accessible outside of the home at novelty venues like phonograph parlors. During this era, a song's popularity was determined not by how many records it sold but by how many copies of sheet music it sold. Tin Pan Alley represents the height of the sheet music era as the vivid sheet music covers that were printed on this block's illustrative. Because sheet music was meant to be taken home and played on piano for entertainment, the aim of publishers was to expose their music to as many prospective buyers as possible to increase the likelihood of sales. A number of influential music industry practices originated on Tin Pan Alley. To encourage sheet music sales, firms hired musicians as pluggers to demonstrate songs in department stores and theaters, gave free professional copies to singers and orchestra conductors to encourage them to perform their new numbers, hired affiliates to masquerade as audience members and demand their songs for performance, pitched their own versions of other companies' hits that didn't have copyright protection, and began to write songs about current events to score national hits. M. Whitmore &amp; Sons, whose office was at 49 and 51 West 28th Street, invented a number of these practices. From the 1870s to about 1900, the area around Tin Pan Alley became home to a significant portion of the city's black population, a percentage of whom were southern-born migrants in search of opportunities unavailable to them in the Jim Crow era of South. At about the same time, a significant number of Jewish immigrants fled persecution in Eastern Europe and arrived in New York City. On Tin Pan Alley, composers of color and Eastern European Jewish descent had unprecedented opportunities as mainstream songwriters and music publishers. Ragtime, the most popular genre of music from much of the Tin Pan Alley era, arose in African-American communities throughout the Southern Midwest and drew influences from African and Afro-Caribbean music. The first black-owned and black-operated music publishing businesses in the United States had offices on this block. Some of their songwriters deliberately tried to rework stereotypes which were popular in music of the time because of the influence of minstrel shows and American vaudeville. Among Jewish publishers, citadines were seen as a prime source of men with "rabidic voices" to plug songs at department stores or vaudeville shows. On Tin Pan Alley, some Jewish publishers printed ragtime music on behalf of black songwriters in addition to adapting ragtime syncopation to create hits of their own. As music publishers began to congregate in the area, 28th Street between Broadway and Sixth Avenue was given the name Tin Pan Alley. The slang term "tin pan" was refused to occur to cheap, tinny-sounding pianos by about 1860. Journalists Monroe H. Rosenfeld and Roy McCardell and publisher Harry von Tilzer are variously credited with coining the term "Tin Pan Alley" in 1902 or '03 to describe the racket of piano music audible on 28th Street, supposedly after complaining that the clanging noises made the whole street sound like Tin Pan Alley. On the left, a cacophony of music notes, Bomars, passersby, and speaks to this origin myth. The accompanying article notes that, quote, "Tin Pan Alley is that part of 28th Street that lies between Broadway and Sixth Avenue, here center the song publishing houses of New York." Between 1901 and 1920, most American households began to own record players for the first time. Sheet music sales peaked at 2 billion copies in 1910. By then, most of the music publishers on Tin Pan Alley, followed the entertainment districts to Harold and Times Squares, where larger, newer, and custom offices were able to accommodate their new in-house orchestras and recording spaces. The photograph on the right shows a quieter street in 1920, about a decade after the last of the songwriters moved uptown. Because of its association with music production, since its origin here, the term "Tin Pan Alley" later became synonymous with the music industry in general, much like Hollywood became synonymous with the motion picture industry. On the left is an illustration of West 28th Street in the thick of the Tin Pan Alley era. The 1970s article on the right shows a later use of the term "Tin Pan Alley" to mean the music business in general. The sense of an alley has been diminished by the demolition or substantial alteration to buildings that were used for music publishing. Only structures shown in green remain largely intact, and only those with the music symbol had a known affiliation with Tin Pan Alley's music businesses. In order to best represent the consolidation of the music publishing industry on this block, we focused on the north side of the street, where a row of intact Tin Pan Alley era structure remains and where considerably more publishing firms had their offices. Of these buildings, those shown in green in this diagram retain façades that are largely intact to the Tin Pan Alley era. Buildings on either side of this row have been altered since the Tin Pan Alley era, including modification or full replacement of façades. As a result of the high level of integrity and fidelity to their appearance in the Tin Pan Alley era, 47, 49, 51, 53, and 55 West 28th Street are proposed as landmarks. Together, these buildings preserve a sense of historic streetscape as it appeared when a cacophony was part of the experience of the block. They retain much of their historic detail, including bracketed cordices, fenestration patterns, and projecting stone sills and lintels consistent with their design as Italianate row houses. All of these structures underwent lower floor conversions to accommodate two-story storefronts before or during the Tin Pan Alley era. Above these storefronts, these row houses have undergone little change since the Tin Pan Alley era. Among the included buildings are 47 West 28th Street, which is home to both to music publishers and to the New York Clipper, one of the foremost music and entertainment magazines of its time; 49 West 28th Street, shown here; and 51 West 28th Street, which were Paul Dresser's offices at the end of his illustrious career and the offices of M. Whitmore &amp; Sons, who pioneered a number of Tin Pan Alley's marketing strategies and printed some of its biggest hits; 53 West 28th Street, shown here, which was home to many music publishers for 13 years; and 55 West 28th Street, which also contained offices of numerous publishers. These intact 1850s buildings with turn-of-the-century commercial alterations represent Tin Pan Alley's significant contributions to musical history and to American culture. The research staff recommends that they calendar for consideration individual landmarks. Thank you.
Yes, Sarah. Any thoughts or questions?
Yes, I would ask just how many of the sign about creating this is a series of individuals opposed to the district.
So, you know, when we look at, the criteria is a little bit different, and so it's something that we, we thought about a lot. And so historic districts by definition have to have a collection of buildings that create a distinct sense of place, or that are a distinct sense of place within the city. And generally speaking, historically, for the last 50 years, the Commission has really looked at how much exists to be able to create that distinct sense of place. And so one of the approaches is usually two sides of the street, or if it's only one side of the street, there is something that won't change from the part that provides context on the other side of the street, or that should be so cohesive architecturally that they stand on their own. So, because this is a small collection, and while they together, being contiguous, do reflect this moment in time and this history, they are, they don't quite meet the definition of a historic district, so we are doing that as individuals that respond to each other, both architecturally and culturally. Yes, no?
And, do you want to add something?
Something that the Commission has done since the very beginning, the Commission's is a small collection, but similarly situated like that in the case of.
The plan showed a couple of buildings on the south side of the street that looked like they were potentially available, just wondering how it's from my perspective.
Yeah, and this, we sort of focused on a large and contiguous collection to really be the representative type. I don't know, Kate, if you want to add anything to that. I think that's what you have said is really what it was, that we, we wanted to focus on the fact that Tin Pan Alley was this collection and concentration of music publishing, and it created what we could capture here in this row of buildings together really retains that character back from the period and represents that history the most strongly here. So this is where we have prioritized. I think because the history is about multiple buildings together providing this sense of place. Alright, so, you know, I think this is really exciting for me, I think with these buildings. There was a lot of advocacy for these buildings, and, you know, we really took a hard look at it and I think are very excited because they represent not only kind of a moment in time and a moment in our cultural history, and they are a place that represents that, they're also a place that represents the people that contributed to this cultural history and to the city and to the nation, and so I think it's very exciting on that level too. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to be calendered.
For which, sir?
On favor?
Right.
Any opposed? I think the calendar will help to have a public hearing in the very near future.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners. We're going to start today's preservation department agenda with public hearing items. First is item number one. This is LP C19-29526, an application for a certificate of appropriate dissonance in the borough of Queens, Block 842, Lot 58, 8 Shore Road, the Douglas Historic District, Imperial Revival style precinct house built in 1950. The application is to construct an addition and modify the driveway.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michelle Farron, Preservation Staff. This item for 40 uses for work at 8 Shore Road, only on arrival from precinct house built in the 1950s and located at the northwest corner of Shore Road and West Drive, in the southwest corner of the Douglas Historic District. I would also like to note that this is not one of the buildings to which the historic district was designated. So this slide here just shows the existing conditions of the property. And this slide shows an overview of the proposal, which includes the demolition of the existing rear extension, and its replacement with a new addition, and the modification of the driveway and curb cut. The application is here to discuss the proposal in detail.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Frank McCalla, and I'm the president of Record Village, and I'm here on the front of Suzanne Lane at the old American 8 Shore Road. So we're here to discuss the potential to add the two-story addition to the northern part of the building, which generally exists a one-story garage and freeway, which is actually the house and garage. And the slide shows the sort of the existing condition, which is that the property is located on the corner of Shore Road and West Drive. The current condition here is a cave style front door here, house basement, basement stairway with an extensive backyard, side yard, the sort of detached garage connected to the house and the freeway, two-part garage, one-story, that's the sort of historic features, siding, round windows, two shakes. What we're proposing is to add, let's get to the slide, two stories, which includes a bedroom, two-part garage, that's the rest of the family building, extensive bathroom, expansive portion of the interior building to the existing sort of awkward arrangement of the existing building. Does it look like a side roof on the second floor? So what we're proposing here at the second floor is larger bedrooms, larger bathrooms, and sort of revamping the existing space down there now. In addition to that, we are addressing the issue that we're having with the driveway that was placed upon a new addition to access the proposed relocation to garage. So currently, there's a 43-inch round, actually a water tree here, which actually would have us break the driveway directly into the line with the two-part garage. We're going to have to sort of place the driveway out of center, I guess, from the existing car garage, or those garage doors. We're proposing also to keep in line with the current exterior materials of the building, which is seen as shade and white trim, wood trim on the building. Replace the garage door currently, because it's a two-part garage door, lights, we're going to replace it with eyes at the new location. The proposed, we've just like it over, and the existing, uh, that sits on the, of the current freeway, so this is the connection between the old house, which is the side of the cave, that they do, or the story additions, this work here. I guess that's pretty much where we are right now.
Were there any questions?
No. Can I go over your post about the roof line? It looks like the roof line of the new work is considered to be flatter and hip versus the cables that seem to characterize the existing house.
Okay, so the wider part of the cave is along Shore Road. Here, this is, this is shore, and this is West Drive on this side, this elevation. So we do have a lot of roof exposure on Shore Road. The second story obviously has the typical cave guard doors, smaller bedrooms, less accessible space on the second floor. So by adding the addition here to reorient off the existing high slope roof, it just promotes better looking space on the second floor. That's pretty much where it stands.
So the functional position is opposed to an aesthetic one trying to match.
Yeah, so we're, I mean, we try to achieve a highest inches possible without having to install doors which make the space awkward on the second floor. And it would actually just, it would almost be inaccessible from the current second floor, the half-story second floor to, to the, to the proposed, to this area. So if we were to increase the slope of the roof here, it would not allow us to actually navigate through the space here to be accessible, very narrow space.
Any other questions? We will take public testimony and then come back to you. Okay, Jesse Deno?
Good morning, Jesse Deno, Police Department, Sheriff's Council. This application is in rather a dissipative form and requires a factual study. The introduction of the core style of the places and platforms are complete with style. It is something quite close to the appearance of the red mansion, which are known for having several different roof styles on the time that they've lived together. The lack of articulation between garage and house is becoming problematic. Here, the original design book that noted cables and doors has vanished. It is replaced merely by gift boxes, much to detriment of West Drive. It is unfortunate that the sole pencil design on the house, the ocked over window on the garage, was not considered worthy of incorporation into the new design. The addition should be lower than the existing primary cable roof, and this generously sized block allows for much room for exploration and extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Okay. We have a letter from the Douglas Manor Association requesting that a non-compliant fence be addressed. And we have also, yeah, those are both the same. And we have a letter from the Douglas Little Neck Historical Society suggesting that the applicant reconsider the shape and massing of the new addition, and that the massing follow the rules of the old house with a clear hierarchy of parts, and that the face should be wood to match the existing trim details. And finally, we have a resolution from Community Board 11 in Queens. Consider the proposal made, they have considered the proposal made the following comments: At the side elevation on West Drive, upper and lower windows of the northerly portion of the new building, do not line up. On the proposed back elevation, the committee suggested some fenestration on the second floor, blank wall, and suggested matching windows on the garage wall with those that may be proposed on the second floor. They questioned the 19-foot curb cut, feeling that it's wide and it should be limited to 15 feet, and asked if it were possible for a slight change in the roof line to define old and new construction. Would you like to respond to the comments that have been made here as well as the comments from the Community Board and Douglas Little Neck Historical Society?
So in response to the roof lines, simply being a pencil roof or a box, we addressed that a little earlier on, so we're just trying to make the space a little bit more adequate from the current building into the new addition, so there are possibilities of study to increase the slope of the roof to, or sort of make it more in line with what's going on there as the typical cave which style. In fact, we could come back to that. And as far as the curb cut and the access to the garage, it could definitely be made smaller, however, we can need to sort of make access to the two-part garage. That's why we made it a little wide, so we can also line around the trees accessing the property.
How wide is the curb cut? It's 19?
19.
And there's a tree there, and that's...
There is a large tree, let's move this. The tree is here, currently, which also kind of connects the driveway, or driveway. So if you move the garage over northernly on the property, it becomes a little bit closer to the tree, however, not going to cut the tree out, of course, because we're special about the tree, the building, where it's costly. Let's see, it's a, we have four of us. So you're looking east on Shore Road, the house, the current house, most existing, we'll change on this elevation. The, again, if you're looking north, our elevation, the most existing match. So this is the curb tree. So we're moving the garage over by up twenty feet. So we have approximately seventy feet now from the curb cut to the tree. So once we move the garage over, we sort of have to keep in line for the curb cut and its sway inside the property to access the garage shop. That's the reason. On the rear elevation, the, actually the, uh, new board connect on the windows at this elevation here. Initial submission showed this elevation to be blank. The windows, and I know light size aren't that desirable, so we've added the windows and worked out on the interior as well as the exterior, I believe it does suit the building. And we had these windows misaligned in elevation, so we aligned those as well.
So just getting back to the roof line, so I understand that the connecting piece is a narrow, so you're concerned that if you do a gable roof over it, you will limit the interior space in that room. Is that also, can you talk maybe just about the addition portion of it, if that can have a gable roof, like the parts of the house?
Well, we can actually get into that, yes. So here's the current position, the back is looking east. Just again, here's the addition. So we would have to drop this entire eve down, just to create a higher pitch here, which would make essentially just a hallway leading from the, this building to the proposed addition. Wouldn't make a lot of floor area. If we were to re-study it, I would actually propose to actually extend this even further out, so we have more usable space on the addition. If we were to just simply create a hallway there. Again, we would have to go back to address windows, elevations, aligning the sun. This space would become simply a hallway. All of the useful space that we proposed in there would have to be then transferred to the current addition, the garage, two stories. Certainly now there are two very, very small bedrooms up here, a bathroom. Not suitable for a family, home and family, so we would have to, yeah, there is a possibility to do it.
Are there any other questions? Will you motion to close the hearing? All in favor? Who would like to start the discussion? Diana?
Yeah, um, I know that I'm adding to this building because it was a kind of a little extreme. Just to assess the weight and, um, I think it certainly has a particularly interesting character. But at the same time, I think that finding new structure really is very much still lacking in character, and this isn't appropriate in the district. It seems sort of a mixture of styles almost. And for me, there is a design theme that resonates with the district, so. Not architects, I believe there are two architects in the panel, too, if they could submit some suggestions that might help. I think it could even be, um, larger than the existing building, it's fairly small in the context. It is, maybe, but it could be even larger, just so that it prepass a sense of, that's, other buildings in this district, which there's a great variety of possibilities, um, but right now it just doesn't, it just seems to be a lot of pieces stuck together that don't have character, from what I believe that the project and, that actual structure.
Diana? I am grateful to Diana that, um, that the addition doesn't really respect the original architecture, and the original building's not living most now in the, in the district. I feel there is opportunity to play with the roof lines, and I don't know if they could potentially even go higher with addition to, instead of pushing the gable down, possibly bringing the roof line up to have useful spaces, I would give it extra character.
Yeah, I, I think that, when you're dealing with a it's not a challenge, um, you got it, the job, the job for someone working in the district, in a district should make it better. Uh, to find things in it that are good, give it some character, enhance those in what we're going to do to add to this. And this one really has to take that opportunity. The cave, it's like nineteen-fifties cave style, uh, I grew up with it, it's pretty awful. But it does have threads that you can pull to, to work on to make it better. Um, and certainly in this house, you have two materials, brick and the big shakes, and you have the gables. Uh, and to not take advantage of those to build threads is to miss, miss the boat. And all you gotta do is look at the rest of the district, which is replete with historic, or historic system houses, um, to see many, many techniques that other architects over the decades have used to solve the problem, and the architect says is unsolvable without a different disc. Although, um, there's dormers, there's texture differences, there's plane differences. There is a million different grades to articulate this house that would allow good expression of the gables, and that would not be once in a while modifized program, uh, or leave spaces required. You would just take a little bit more, uh, effort, a little more thought, a little bit more, you know, devotion to aesthetics. I think it's easily done, mostly by looking at the district.
Any other thoughts? Okay, I think, I think we all agree that the addition really needs to really better to the style giving features of this particular building, and to look to the examples within the historic district to find where to do it. But I think that really needs exploring a gable type roof primarily, and then if you're about to articulate the materials and, and facade qualities and windows. So, um, we'll work with staff and we'll see you back.
We're gonna move on to item number two, this is LPC one-nine-dash-three-nine-eight-one. An application for a certificate for work in this borough of Manhattan, block five forty-five, block three. Three ninety-four hundred Lafayette Street, AKA eleven-nine East Fourth Street, Melk focus District. Neo Burke style store in Austin, designed by Cleverton in 1887, eighty-eight. The application is to install a marquee.
Good morning, Commissioner Lomack. Your presentation starts. The subject premises is located at four hundred Lafayette Street, floor and block building, taking up the northern, northwest corner of Lafayette Street and East Fourth Street, and within the Melk focus District. The application is to install a tinted glass marquee with brushed metal, uh, brush structural steel attachment, come at the northernmost entrance at Lafayette Street. Please note that a tinted glass marquee with metal just number is fifteen feet and nine inches high, this will replace the existing grand farder on this is here. The applicant has also prepared photos of two existing morgue marquee in the historic district, one of that here, and right. Um, the applicant's architect, Michael Rossetti, is still given to give any last remarks and ask any questions. Also, there is example of the material glasses.
Good morning, Commissioner, Michael Zepa, Jartex. As you mentioned, we're proposing to replace the existing power, uh, on it, open a commercial entrance and support the block connection with a new frameless pass marquee. One of the considerations that we were tasked with was trying to preserve the existing cast iron entrance around the entranceway. So we felt that it was in our best interest to replace it. We felt that cast iron, uh, trying to, you know, attach to a covered ceiling. Given the fact that it is plastic, it is grainless, that it is still visible from the interior of the house. As I mentioned, all the attachments are brushed stainless steel, mounted to the base of the joints. Have any questions?
Any questions? Any, considering would you like to speak on this application? We do have a resolution from Manhattan, Division two, recommend you provide the application for the modern design as appropriate to the building and the neighborhood. Do you feel, starting at the moment, make any final statements?
We, we agree as a modern edition of the block, but, you know, looking at some of the other properties that were installed, grounds that were just started all day. They're all very heavy and dark, and everyone has something to play over, and it's kind of hard to do that with a more traditional modern design. Um, you know, I think even if you were to look at something like this, which is on Bond Street, it's still a modular interpretation, it just has a steel frame around it. But, you know, this is directly across, it's just, uh, it's, it's very thick and bulky, I feel that would just kind of, you know, darkness way towards the building.
So, and this is to identify the entrance?
Yes.
And is it also meant to provide coverage, shelter, or some visiting angles up?
Oh, a little bit, you know, the angle is more for drainage purposes. You know, we just sculpted a little bit just to have everything all the way around, because that'd be boring on the pedestrian floor.
And I hear that you were trying to avoid the cast iron and the framing, so that's what we thought above it. Did you explore just doing something within the door opening, over the door?
We did as well, but as you can see, um, you know, for this location, the door, you know, will be one bay between this cast iron opening, and perhaps at one point, it's hard to tell, many stored photos, maybe this whole bay wasn't entrancewayed. But at the moment, all on the right side is the entranceway to the lobby of the commercial space, and then next to it is a storefront window, which is part of the offices inside. So we felt that just having it over half of it would, wouldn't really be appropriate, because the cast iron, for example.
Any other questions? Make a motion to close the hearing?
Sure.
All in favor? Mary's closed, discussion. Who wants to start on this one? John?
I, I know the staff has some concern about that, as you expressed, that it will cover the two bays, but actually I think it, it seems to make sense to them. Um, you know, you, you two actually double it, and it doesn't seem like it's intrusive.
I agree, I think that it addresses the architectural building, but having it just over the, the door. And then come back at the, the glass, the dark color, um, just basically adds to the heaviness of it, so maybe you can, unless you can, like, there are, there are.
Any thoughts? I think it's fine in response to the architecture. Do other people agree that the glass should be a lighter tint, or most people agree with that? Okay, so I think we should, we have, we have. Item number plus nineteen dash thirty-three-four-eight-one, three ninety dash four hundred Lafayette Street, AKA eleven dash nineteen, East Fourth Street, Melk focus District. Okay. A Neo Burke style store in Austin, building designed by Cleverton in 1887 to 1888. The application is to install a marquee. I know that the building's size, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the normal historic district. I recommend approval, finding that. The work will not alter, eliminate, or conceal any significant historic architectural features, but the presence of a marquee over main entrance will be in keeping with it. Similar installations found at some buildings of this size within this historic district, and with the industrial character of the building, that marquee and freestanding dimensional address numbers will be simply designed to meet typical in terms of projection and utilize materials which are consistent with the material palette of buildings within the streetscape, that the width of the marquee will be well scaled to the entrances of the bay, and that the tint of the glass will be have a little bit of historic color palette of the building. Okay. Can we have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's approved, thank you.
Next is item number three, this is LPC one-nine-dash-three-three-nine-eight-nine. An application for a certificate for work in this borough of Manhattan, block five eight, block eleven, sixty-six, Morville Street, Greenwich Village, historic district. A row house, building eighteen fifty-two. The application is to construct rooftop and rear additions and reconstruct and raise rear facade.
Good morning, Commissioners, Richard Lowry, Preservation Staff. Side unit is sixty-six, Morville Street. It's a three-story row house, uh, situated, the basement floor located on the south side of Morville Street. Out to Manhattan Street, and the southern part of the Greenwich Village historic district. So as you can see, there's a, there's a split between a larger five-story row house to the east, and a smaller three-story row house to the west. Maybe most visible from the west and north. Uh, the proposal is three-fold. Uh, first, the part is to construct a one-story, stucco coated, mystery rooftop addition with a stairwell pad. Uh, and rear demolishing a deteriorated rear permacery facade, constructing a new slightly taller, slightly taller rear facade, uh, and adding a two-story permacery rear addition, with a roof like an interior, both balcony and upstairs. And just to the deteriorating conditions, and at the moment there are sort of metal bracing, keep the facade, uh, from deteriorating further, and the, uh, going to a more information. Uh, just various shots of similar, uh, replacements in the, uh, um, and the third part is raising of the west side permacery facade, infill the spaces between the existing chimneys and also the recent chimneys, to, uh, cover the white heights. This is section, uh, existing plan, proposed floor plan, not the addition, uh, the full roof plan, and the rear, uh, yard, the addition, and the station back. Uh, since the axons. And from the mockups and the photo montages in the axons, um, so none of the proposed work at the rear will be visible in connection with the front side of the house. Uh, the proposed rooftop addition and raised parapassit chimneys will be visible in connection with the front facades indirectly, and the west side facades from Morton and from Hudson Streets. Um, additional restoration work on the front facade is proposed, but this can be doubled at staff level. Uh, the architects, Peter Newer and Jennifer Jarrett Harris, are people, our architects, are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
I'm Peter Newer, and this is my partner.
Jennifer Jarrett Harris.
Are there any questions?
Um, is there anything you'd like to add?
Um, yes, I mean, we're very, uh, happy to be able to take care of this building, which is severely degraded. We are keeping most of the structure inside, keeping, uh, floor framing, um, and, uh, we're, we nestled the penthouse addition as low as possible into the existing slope roof, um, setting the roof line at just high enough to get a departed six-eight door out of the bulkhead directly to the roof for egress. So we've examined a number of ranges, uh, as a way of minimizing the penthouse, and we think that we've got to make it to be as minimal, uh, as, as possible. Um, I also think that Jennifer could address the condition of the rear wall, um, because we rarely, we'd recommend removing existing, uh, fabrics like that if we were viable.
The photo shows the lower portion of the
The photo shows the lower portion that we would be removing for a small rear extension that's sixty-six inches. And then we would be, what we look at stabilizing, holding up the top portion of the rear facade, but you can see, if you look closely, it has a lot of cracks that transfer from the left side all the way to the right side of the building. It's been permanently based by two metal pins at the moment, and the right side has a tremendous number of amount of water deterioration and water is really just coming in. So from the inside, you can also see the damage that's transferred all the way through. So pretty much. So you're going to reconstruct it in time from that, like, to the same project? And the material on the addition that you will see from the street?
So we are using, the rear reason for it that we've used in prior landmarked projects in Greenwich Village, and the penthouse for the stepco, stepco of the asylum of parapet section to naturally exist.
Any other questions?
I know this building is remarkable, mostly the floors, the volumes or the scale of those, it just seems, it's hard to understand why a roof addition is actually necessary on this building, but I realize everyone's got the right to do that. I would just think that it shouldn't be visible at all.
Okay. Question, question? So it mustn't be visible, could you? I know you sunk it and you have a low floor ceiling height, but you want to talk a little bit more about opportunities to make it visible that you explored?
So we looked at also rewriting mechanical equipment so that we do not have to raise it at all to accommodate that work. We've done that. We looked at lowering the framing heat below the existing roof line. We did that, lowered the ceiling itself in that small room, essentially building larger than the bulkhead, and we've done that. Am I missing anything, Jennifer?
No. We also, we're required to make, the penthouse is not any larger than it can be, which is thirty-three point three percent of the roof area. We're trying to really nestle it as far into the southeast corner as possible to really minimize that visibility. Okay. All right, we'll take this audio, come back to you. Louisa Winchell?
Hello, Louisa Winchell from Village Preservation. Village Preservation strongly supports the restoration plan to the front facade of sixty-six Morton Street. This iconic structure within the Greenwich Village Historic District is one of the best known houses within the district and one of those most strongly associated with its particular history and charm. It was constructed in eighteen fifty-two and is unusual for its time with the inclusion of a full height polygonal bay at the front facade. For these reasons, a sensitive restoration plan is especially important here, and this plan accomplishes that beautifully. Our committee was split, however, on the visiting of the rooftop addition. While some felt the proposed addition was too visible, others felt the setback needed acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Okay, we do have two emails that came through our portal, individuals recommending denial or rejecting the proposal, and we have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board Two recommending approval of the application with the exception of the impound at the rear parlor level to reflect a more historic design. So would you like to respond with a comment?
Yes, so we feel that the restoration of the building is, I think, accomplishing a really important goal, and that the penthouse is, you know, only visible for two station points and originally invisible for most others. And I think that it is a minimal addition, and I don't think it will have impact on the street scape or the surrounding urban environment. And, you know, the building is unusual, it was built by the builder. The designation reports suggest it was built by Trinity, it's actually the land sold by Trinity to the builder, and so it has a special character, and we recognize that in the dimensions.
Okay. Can you just walk us through the views and set plan to show the points from which you see it?
So you can see on the left, you can see the mockup of the penthouse, the walls to the splitter of it. The parapets themselves are the required height for safety on that section of the roof. And so this is from a station point on the other side. Can you go to the next? Going further away, you see the, that's a splitter of it, the bulkhead, which is visible there. Other than that, further east or west in other direction, it pays away behind the street wall.
Okay, and if you move in either direction, up and down to Hudson Street, then the adjacent building starts to lock in?
Correct. These viewpoints are chosen to the maximum visibility.
Any other questions?
Yes, my question. Are you reframing the top floor in order to drop it down or?
Yes, we're having to reframe it, absolutely.
Yet the, it looks from rear elevation, they've raised the parapet a little bit?
It's a minimal re-raising of that line, and it's reframing the original detail.
Right.
And it also is worth noting that there's no wedding structure, so it's not interrupting any datum or dating line in the rear yard, street scape. They don't have.
Could you turn to page ten, please? So if you look at the dimensions and the heights on the addition, I'm just wondering, is there any room there to bring it down a little bit to reduce the visibility?
I think that there are a number of factors Jennifer made, and we have some other ones, but one of the principal ones is the requirement to have egress from the bulkhead to the roof without going through the penthouse room. This means that there has to be egress at the north side, which is the door, if you can see, where laser energy is, is right there. So that is a controlling factor, is that we're part of the door there.
And mechanicals?
So.
Can you just make clear, Winchell, when I'm speaking, is the bulkhead, if that is even a visible portion, I understand that is, the occupied space that's stretching out closer to the visible portion, now, the bulkhead, although it's taller, it's not a visible portion, so we can walk you through what you're actually seeing.
This is the bulkhead, and that is the penthouse room.
So the front portion is not that, that's the order.
This is the visible corner.
And I know you said you were keeping the interior, so you're not reconfiguring the stair so that the stair could end up going out toward the back instead of the front?
Correct. So we're replicating, the existing stairs is literally part, we're replicating exactly the existing stair and that existing envelope. And we're also happily not including an elevator in this project, because that would make things even more complicated.
Any other questions? Okay. We'll have a motion to close the hearing.
One second.
And on paper?
Aye.
So, Adia, you know?
I understand.
Okay, so.
I think it's acceptable.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Thank you. John? Do you have any thoughts on the project? Okay, all right, well, I think that your explanations are very persuasive, and while we do like to see additions be as minimally visible from the public way as possible, I think it was helpful to know that it's a limited view corridor, just sort of that angle across that intersection, and that, I think, for materials, either matching existing materials and the portion of addition that you see would be a stepable receiving from the. And are you pleased with that?
I would like to say it looks like the building includes the mentalists and, it's in the front.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, I just, as you said, also the situation, if you've got the, they're both in this building, I believe, and there's some, the situation where you're all, the difficulty of making the addition, like, in this building, see, for the interior design that you're doing, different shape for the back there.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, John?
In matter of pocket number nineteen dash three three nine eight nine, sixty-six Morton Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District, the application is to construct rooftop and rear additions and reconstruct and raise the rear facade and parapets. I note that the building's scale, style, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I recommend approval, noting that the work will not alter, damage or destroy any significant architectural features or be directly visible over the front side of the house, but the proposed rooftop addition, the raising of the west parapet and the raised and new chimneys will only be seen from a public thoroughfare of limited views against the background of the large secondary facade of a neighboring building. That the rooftop addition will be set back from the front and rear facades, thereby helping to maintain visual cues to the historic masting of the house. That the raised parapet sections will closely match the existing facade in terms of materials, details and finishes are set back from the front facade of the building and situated between and behind taller chimneys and will only be moderately increased in height, thereby maintaining a simple silhouette at the sidewalk. That the enlarged chimneys will be simply designed in typical in terms of materials and finishes. That reconstruction of the rear facade is warranted by its deteriorating conditions. That the reconstruction of the upper floors of the rear facade will help address existing disrepair and will match the existing historic facade design, with the exception of the lengthening of the masonry openings and increase in the height of the top floor. That the house is not part of an executing row, and the modest increases to the top floor of the rear facade will maintain typical proportions at the top of the building and therefore the height, and proportional changes to the rear facade will not detract from the house or the surrounding properties. That the proposed rear addition will be consistent with additions found in other row houses, pictures locked in terms of the number of floors and projections of the rear yard, and will not eliminate the presence of a rear yard or dimension continuity of essential weed space. That the rear addition will feature a solid void ratio of floor levels and a materials palette which is consistent with the surrounding secondary facades of neighboring buildings, and that the work of rear facade, a new rear addition will not be visible from a public thoroughfare.
On paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think that's approved. Thank you.
Okay, we go to item number four. This is LPC one nine dash three four seven two three, application for certificate of appropriateness of the road in Manhattan block seven ninety-four, block twenty-five, one twenty-three West Eighteenth Street, Ladies Mile Historic District, a new Renaissance style department store addition designed by Kimball and Thompson, and built in eighteen eighty-six. The application is to install a block.
Good morning, Commissioner, which is our preservation staff. The item for you is one twenty-three West Eighteenth Street in the Ladies Mile Historic District, building located in mid-block on the north side of the street, opposite avenues. Your reference is a storage photograph and a consistent commission's photograph. The proposal is to install a flag pole of this location, and down at the next step is to have an existing lane sign that can be worked on. Here is a close-up shot of the entrance for dealings, and here is a close-up shot of the white statement, the lane sign, which was utilized under certificate of appropriateness twenty-nine dash one one from five block. Here's our existing elevation of the entire building. Here's the proposed, you can see our flag poles go here, and here's a close ground floor elevation a little bit closer, so you can see exactly the flag pole will be up here this time, so it'll be a little closer here, fold aside. There's a side elevation, you can see this flag pole. And then we have a few, two scale drawings showing how we install it.
This is number, build size, your taxes, this corner, all good.
Um, is that correct? I thought it was for, for capitalizing ability for that.
That's a, that's a part of it.
Sorry, are you done, Jennifer? No, sorry. Okay, so we'll get to that in a minute. Here's the proposal rendering of the five. And then we have several examples of flag poles in this district. So this first one is flag poles on the other side of this building, on the West Nineteenth Street facade, that were installed for approved under certificate of appropriateness ninety-four dash zero one eight four in nineteen ninety-four, and in eighteen ninety-nine, matching flag poles were approved for the Eighteenth Street facade, but were never installed in the front of this six five. Just here are all the particles. Okay, so it's a three-block building, with flag poles on the.
Um, so facade and prior commission approval for flag poles on this, this, the Eighteenth Street facade.
Yeah, thanks for your answer. Any questions?
Please come up and you can answer the question about the user. And just state your name of the building.
Good, good morning. I'm Robert from the Architect Department. What exactly was the question? Is for signage, is it used for, at the time, or whatever it's called? It's primarily used to give some significance to this entrance, because the men's hall events have, pavilion has a number of different entrances, they're major dependent in the building, and they have a number of assembly halls. This particular entrance goes to their assemblies, which are on the second, the third, fourth floor. At this point, let's just the flag pole on ten to get for signage.
All right, any other questions? Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? We do have a recommendation from Manhattan Community Board Four, that the CP four finds that the proposed staff is consistent with other staffs, like the flag poles in the Ladies Mile Historic District, and does not envision any negative impact on the neighborhood, and recommends approval on the condition that the size of the banner be no larger than three feet by five feet. And that the banner identifies the metropolis pavilion and the gate that's taken place there. So generally, they recommend approval. Any final questions? We'll have a motion to close the hearing.
One second.
On paper? Okay, so comments?
There's just something a little bit strange about this image. I don't know what it is exactly, but.
Perspective.
It's the perspective. Yes, or, or just even, they've got the flag hanging that way in that size, something.
Okay. Okay, so is everybody comfortable with it? It is oddly short, but I think we can say that it doesn't overwhelm the building. And then, even in conjunction with the we work sign that is previously approved, it's along the side, it seems like it won't overwhelm the building, it won't cause damage to any seen anything different features.
Are you clear with, not in that case, yes, for the American flag? Yes.
Or at all?
In the matter of LPC one nine three four seven two three, one twenty-three West Eighteenth Street, Ladies Mile Historic District, a new Renaissance style department store addition designed by Kimball and Thompson, and built in eighteen ninety-six, the application is to install a flag pole. I note the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of Ladies Mile Historic District, and I recommend approval, finding that large-scale department store technology of the building can support the presence of a flag pole above the entrance, that the size of the flag pole is well proportioned to the facade, that the flag pole will be consistent with the commercial and industrial character of the street scape, that the attachment will not cause irritable damage to the facade, and a few amount of projecting signage on the facade, including a large word sign previously approved by the commission, in conjunction with the flag pole, will not overwhelm this large facade.
this large facade. That the work will not diminish the special architectural historic character of the building and the streetscape of the historic district.
Second?
All in favor? Any opposed? I think that's approved. Thank you.
Item number five, LPC one nine dash three five seven six zero. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block twelve oh six, lot seventy five oh one, three twenty-seven Central Park West, AKA Eighteenth West and Third Street, Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. A neo-renaissance style apartment building designed by Nathan Corn and built between nineteen twenty-eight or twenty-nine. The application is to add replacement openings at the penthouse.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm with the New Appropriations Staff. The item before you today is three twenty-seven Central Park West, located in the northeast corner of the intersection of West Ninety-third Street and Central Park West, in the upper west side of Central Park. The proposal for you is to modify masonry opening to the existing penthouse. And install new doors and windows. The proposed work is visible within the park as well as you can see in this, you've got some buildings through this rendering here, looking north as well as the view within the park. The advocates are through from the center.
Good morning, Commissioners. Erin Lily Higgins-Plays, Barth. Alexander Borland is the Architect's Code Project and he's here to answer any questions you might have or walk you through the presentation quickly. As Olivia said, the building, three twenty-seven Central Park West, is on the southwest corner of Ninety-third Street and Central Park West. It was sixteen story apartment building designed in nineteen twenty-nine by Nathan Corn and it has an existing one story penthouse that's set back. This is an original architectural photograph of the building and as you can see, the penthouse is not visible. It's very much a secondary element of the building and not intended to be part of the composed facade. And here's a comparable elevation photograph. And then just a walk around the existing penthouse. Here it is in aerial view. You can see that there are no alignments between the primary facade and the penthouse. There is a master plan for windows at the building and does not include the penthouse because of the irregular tubularity of the facade. And then here, this is the east elevation, so this is the park facing elevation, looking north. Some window openings and doors along this, all modern inbuilt. The north elevation, looking west, and you can see that a substantial amount of the penthouse has been reconstructed. It's utilitarian buff brick structure with an ornamental eagle line with anti-fixes and E and up there. This is the south elevation. This is over the lot line and the west elevation, which is now visible from the park. And here is the existing elevation, north and proposed north elevations along Ninety-third Street. You can see the irregular pattern of the openings at the penthouse and then the new openings, the westernmost opening remains the same and then everything else is modified to some extent along that elevation. And east elevation on the left is the park facing elevation, existing and proposed here. This is, it maintains, the new openings are making the same window head height as the existing and masonry is at each of the openings. There are flues that run up the side of the building and those will be wrapped in brick plating to match the facade. And there is a corner window located at the south elevation over the lot line. You can see this, this is the south, this is the lot line, which is visible along Central Park West. And this is the existing condition here and the proposed condition here. And Olivia mentioned this view, this is basically how you experience the penthouse at a distance in your park. The window, the new window openings are locked up here. And it's, you view it in conjunction with the uppermost part of the facade, not the entire view of the facade, and in conjunction with corner windows at the arts league, which is just to the south of the building. Corner windows are a characteristic of the district, of buildings of the state and type. You see them most commonly on Central Park West in the composed setbacks of the deco and Madera buildings. But because it's such a part of vocabulary of the district, you see it in secondary elements on rooftops with large placed openings that express the corner with a symbol holly and and placed openings pointing to that. And so this is on Columbus Avenue and an addition on Columbus Avenue and then also at the White House on Central Park West. And then just a little bit about the visibility, looking south along Central Park West, the building is in the distance here. This is the mock-up view. This is the rendered view and this is the detail. So you can see this easternmost window there. The north along Central Park West, the mock-up view, the rendered view and detail. So it's maintaining the head height of the existing windows and it's viewed through the railing along, over the lot line. And then again, at a distance from the park view here in the mock-up, the rendered view and the detail. Also, just pointing out here, so here is the, the flues that get wrapped in brick are located right there. And we're also modifying a chimney which is currently located on this corner. It's getting moved to the west so it becomes less visible in the south elevation. And then from Queens. And this is the overall elevation of the existing. So right now, the plan, the window openings are driven by the plan and that is the continued use of the space. There's no sort of formal composition to the, to the existing openings and we would argue that the new proposal actually creates a little more symmetry in the pattern of the openings. This is Central Park West, uh, yes, the Central Park West elevation, corner window here with a holly end at the corner. And this is the south elevation that is visible over the lot line of Central Park West.
Great. Any questions? I think that will take us everybody. Mark Diller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Diller, Community Board seven. I'm the Chair of Preservation Committee. We're here to recommend approval of this proposal. We do consider this a visible element and therefore we took it quite seriously, even more than our usual process. We noted the intentional separation of the design above and below main cornice. The massing above the cornice actually has its own little mini cornice, cornice. So it is integral in and of itself. We didn't find the comparison to precedent in the neighborhood all that helpful because those were largely composed of primary facades and many of an art deco character that has nothing to do with this building. What we did find compelling was that the head heights on the windows remain where they were and that the, the footprint of the proposed new construction would remain essentially the same. And so we had some pause about the wraparound windows facing the south of that curve around to the Central Park West facade. But at the end of the day, it was that separation between what's above and below the cornice that convinced us that this would be appropriate to the historic district. And for that reason, we recommend approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Okay, we do have a letter from Landmarks West recommending approval of the application, finding that consideration will serve considering why and order the exterior areas. Any final questions for the applicant? Motion to close the hearing. All in favor? Anyone like to start on this one? Yes, Michael?
I think this is appropriate. First of all, the only place that you see from quarter mile away in Central Park. In a way, it actually, for me, it helps to make that utilitarian thing sort of disappear and find approval of.
Okay, so a recommendation, approval. In the matter of LPC nineteen three five seven six zero, three twenty-seven Central Park West, AKA Two West and the Third Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. Neo-renaissance style apartment building designed by Nathan Corn and built between nineteen twenty-eight and twenty-nine. The application is to alter masonry openings at the penthouse. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. I recommend approval. Finding that the work will not diminish any significant architectural features, that the alterations to the penthouse windows will be seen only from the distance on Central Park West, from the south and from within the park. That the modifications to existing masonry openings will not affect the decorative masonry. That the existing windows within the penthouse do not necessarily match the configuration or align with the penetration of the building below. And the relocation and enlargement of the existing openings and installation of single pane windows and doors do not permit to diminish the relationship of the penthouse to the building's overall transcription pattern. That the color of the proposed windows do not affect the color of the windows below and that the work will not diminish the special architectural character of the building and streetscape. All in favor? Any opposed? I think it's approved. Thank you.
Next item is item number six, LPC one nine dash three four six three nine. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block twelve hundred, lot thirty-one. Two sixty-two Central Park West and the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. A neo-renaissance style apartment building designed by Sharon Nivelberger and built in nineteen twenty-seven, twenty-eight. The application is to replace windows.
Elizabeth Bacon, Preservation Staff. The item before you is two sixty-two Central Park West, located between West Eighty-sixth and West Eighty-seventh Streets in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. The application is to replace one over one double con windows from time. Here you can see an existing condition photo of the building indicating the location of proposed replacement windows on the fourth floor at the Central Park West facade. The existing windows are one over one aluminum windows with a bronze finish. The majority of the existing windows of the building are currently one over one double con for single pane total interior windows. At the time of designation of this building, the building featured windows in one over one, six over one, and four over one double con, as well as single pane total interior configurations. Many of the existing one over one and single pane windows were installed after designation based on a contract that was in place prior to designation. Here is the nineteen forty's tax photo of the building, which shows that the windows at this time were six over six and four over one double con with a lighter colored finish. Here are the existing and proposed window elevations. The proposed windows, similar to existing, are one over one double con windows, or no windows with bronze finish. Here are the existing window sections and proposed window sections. The proposed windows have profiled metal birch panel, which will follow the profile of the existing brick mold, which you can see here. The Commissioners are reviewing this item today due to the proposed change in window configuration from the historic six over six double con with a lighter finish to a one over one double con configuration with a bronze finish. The applicants here are answering questions.
I just, Elizabeth, just to clarify the, the history of the windows of this building, there was a contract prior to designation that was still in place and so windows were installed. We one over one windows were installed after designation for a period of time and then I believe there were also some commission permits issued based on that prior contract later or maybe these date permits that were issued for this, or what, around this building.
Were debates on those, on this whole process? This is last year or twenty years ago?
This was in the earlier two thousands.
Yeah, it was a certificate of appropriateness from twenty sixteen.
Two thousand up until two thousand and sixteen, which is the last. Would you like to?
Doug Simpson with Tanner Armelino. I don't have any. Doug Simpson, Tanner Armelino, if you have to answer any questions, if anybody might have.
Any questions for the other? We'll take public question. Okay, Mark Diller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Diller, Chair of Preservation Committee, Community Board seven in Manhattan. We're here to recommend a somewhat reluctant recommendation of approval because we are continually concerned about the loss of the historic fabric that is created by the divide of light that we have now lost. Unfortunately, as I understand the application, the divide of light that was the rule on this, on this building's three primary facades is now a wall bomb. Insisting upon the restoration of that would create an inconsistent appearance of this building for generations to come. We're deeply concerned about that because that would be, in effect, like a compromise despite our preservation base. And so we reluctantly find this to be appropriate to the building itself as much as to the, to the surrounding historic district. This is obviously quite a contributing building. It's where I think character tend to live, the original theme, so obviously it has changed. We are also, our concerns about that are softened somewhat by the design. If we could go to P three, you will see that the original grid mold had a very nice detail and that the current iteration of replacement windows simply paved over that with a flat metal panel. That's the lower right-hand corner photograph, which is there to show you the deterioration, but it shows me how faultless the original replacement windows were. And in this, in this iteration, they are going to have the extruded women try to follow the original detail, which obviously we would all prefer new grid molds and wood windows with divide of light, but not at the expense of making the building its own landing stock. This, our final point is that this cries out for a master plan in this building and we will be writing to the building management to suggest that and we welcome your enforcement as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else?
That's item number seven. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. This is number five, six. Two six, you're right. Yes, Doug, sorry. This is Central Park West, Sharon Nivelberger Building. The original six over six window configuration should be restored.
Thank you. Kristin Elkhart.
This felt off for the society of the architecture of the city. Transparency of dwelling became a concern as soon as defenses of plastered architecture made it possible, which in England was around fifteen ninety, when a house was built, van the support of its ground, hardway home, or flats than womb. Here also, as often in Manhattan Historic Districts, we see a building whose facades are almost completely composed of windows. It would seem logical to regulate these openings, which make up most of the facade, in keeping with the architect's original design, here divided lights six over six. But too often instead, we see what we believe to be an increasingly tortured set of rationales withdrawing the original architectural design. Even in the face of the astonishing threats of Manhattan presidential criticism and claims, and substituting some ill compromise. Removing originally detailing tends to devalue the building and the district and the new of the starting transformation. New buildings are building to undesign many parts of the city. It seems worthwhile to give extra care and attention to good nineteen twenties apartment houses like this one and maintain warmth and visual texture that the window did originally contributed. And I'd like to add that a master plan could indeed be a good idea if it were for the original design and that we have. original design, and that we have never been swayed by this argument that all the windows have to be the same or the same.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? And we do have a letter from Lamar's West, saying that the panning, framing, and glazing may become part of a standard for the building if the divide of light divisions are reintroduced. So they recommend approval with modifications seeking the divide of light configuration. Would you like to make any final comments? Okay. All right, so, you know, we know, we've had a long history with windows in general on large apartment buildings, particularly out for that in Central Park West where the majority of the windows are open, as just in this case, were replaced prior to designation. Actually, some are still here prior to designation. And the Commission's approach is kind of evolved over time, but I think more recently we have been improving individual apartments, but they're urging a master plan for something that is more consistent with historic character, and that's reflected even in that 2016 approval and the other permits issued for individual permits that was building. However, I think it's worth a discussion here, there is one apartment, but each time we do an approval, it sort of sets the standard, yes or no?
Yeah, for that reason, we should approve it. I think that this building and its history of approvals is an example of why we should approve it, because just one more, and then we'll get the, we'll get the master. Just one more. Doesn't work out, lines up being a bootstrapped way of avoiding a master plan. There's a disincent to getting a master plan because they know that if they go for a master plan, they're going to ask you to do something they don't want to do, so you might as well just leave them all through as individuals. I don't think I'm a conspiracy theorist, but I think that's, that's something. This building's history of this is proven. I think that we should ask them to put back the windows that were there. This building would be a prime candidate for the kind of decision that they'd have to ask that would originally have been back, because it's a relatively under-articulated facade with relatively light detailing that would dramatically benefit from the re-institution of the detail that the grid of this would provide.
Other thoughts? Yeah, so, I, you know, I understand that we can only recommend a master plan, but there, it would be helpful if we could make that recommendation either strong or somehow convey that, you know, I don't know, the next time they come to us, yeah, we're not going to be too happy if they haven't, you know, taken the time to really think carefully and embrace the fact that these windows are a very important articulation of the facade and architectural of the building. Unfortunately, the six over six configuration, which is quite lovely, is long gone. So I think it's not really realistic to ask for, you know, and it would make the facade look more schizophrenic if we ask this particular applicant to go back to that. That being said, there are a lot of, you know, other, there are other irregular windows in the building, and if, you know, one over one is the best that we can hope for at this particular point, we should really look to one over one building, a window that makes the most sense, and then to, and I understand that there are some, there are some windows that are not, you know, don't have that configuration, but according to those as well, looking for a uniform window and an uniform installation that makes sense and will respect the integrity of the building. So, I mean, I, that's it. Other thoughts?
I'm in agreement with my fellow person. To me, the building looks schizophrenic now, with one over ones and the orphan Annie's over on the side, and there's nothing to keep them continuing to do that. I think this is the step where we say, okay, now you're going to do it the right way.
Sorry. Yeah, I agree about the appearance of the building, and it's a predicament case because it's a very plain building that really needs the articulation of windows. I am troubled by the fact that the Commission has, over and over in the last several years, I don't know, two years ago, said, "There's another problem over one." The council isn't here. I mean, I know we can pick a different decision, we always have the right to it, and, again, I've been here for a long time and seen many instances in which we have drawn a direction and others in a different way. And this, you know, obviously you have to face the contribution of the windows to the building because, I think, you know, we have included one over one, and there's a replacement for one over one. So I'm kind of troubled by their history on that one, but anyway, I certainly can agree that from an aesthetic point of view, it would be more appropriate for the building to have the two sixty six, four over four, or, I don't know, six, six over, nothing like a section one. Just as I've been quoting, someone says, "Six over six," I don't remember exactly what it is.
Yeah, I just, you know, because we've had such a sort of evolving regulatory history just in general for these types of apartment buildings, and then, you know, this particular building, we've had a lot of approvals, and I think that one of the things that we've done in the past to kind of avoid this de facto master plan for one over one is we've, you know, because I think there is sort of an equity or fairness issue, and we've issued, we approved it just two years ago, and have approved it multiple times before. So one of the things that we've done in this past, which we've sort of said on the record, we'll approve this one, because it's a sort of great pretend for the existing buildings to hold the crack, but this is the last one. And any future applications, we will not, you know, sort of put the building unnoticed because the individual apartment owners may have been asked to hold over the building and closing their master plan, but this would be a way of putting behind it. So that's another alternative to try to bridge the, the sort of fairness issue, the fact that we've done the way we've approved it, that we have evolved and we've realized that it's not having a real long-term effect on the building, that we want to shift our approach in this building. So I put that as an alternative.
Because otherwise, they're just coming back, and as Mike has said, it's one more, but we need to come on, I guess, that this is not acceptable.
You not say that in 2016 or some version of it? I mean, I thought, I, I did it.
No, of course we did, but we had, you know, we looked at enough of our buildings with this situation, and I think we're probably remembering it because we haven't other kind of sort of taken this opportunity to put people unnoticed. So I'm sure we've done it in another building during the year down there.
So we ourselves didn't, the Commission didn't see it in 2016?
The Commission saw it, we did see it, but the idea of putting someone unnoticed possibly in this other application. Or, so I guess, are there people who feel that right now we should deny this application? Three, four?
Say, the other way to go is, you know, to recommend that the modification they do is six over one.
Do you have approval of modifications for the original configuration?
At least they would get something approved.
Well, so the, you know, matching the original configuration would be a staff-level approval at this point because we're confident that the details and characteristics matches historically does. Alternatively, you could take no action, but the application's explore proposing either, again, one over one, maybe with bringing back more information about why that might be appropriate next time around in terms of other buildings by the same architecture, or other buildings of the style that maybe use a variety of configurations, or perhaps proposing a sort of a hybrid approach, or maybe the multilights brought back at the upper sash but not the lower sash, things like that that we've seen in the past.
Okay, so I think, thank you, Corey. I think we've made it clear today that I think the Commission is comfortable with continuing to do individual applications for one over one in this building, but we won't take any action today to allow you to continue to explore the approach for this building, but also to continue to talk to the board about considering a master plan. And really, the, the master plan was originally devised as a way to provide owners with a quick approval. Here it's a more industrial, you get the approvals and all the drawings and photographs in one time, and so then after that, it's really a quick sign-on to get approval. So each apartment owner doesn't have to do a full application. And so, while, you know, we like it because it encourages uniformity over the long term, it really was devised to be an administrative tool for co-owner, condo board that has apartments that will change windows at a time. So I would encourage them to consider it because it'll be a benefit to the building and to their shareholders. Okay, great, so we'll take no objection.
Moving on to item number seven, LPC 19-34549. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in Staten Island, block 2966, lot 32, 420 Tompkins Avenue, Garibaldi Memorial Individual Landmark, Goddard provided a house built circa 1925. The application is to install a monument.
Good morning Commissioners, Innenwork and Preservation Staff. The application is to install a monument in evening at the Garibaldi Mucci Individual Landmark in Staten Island. This is a picture of the house in 1907. The house, as you see it here, was encased in a concrete temple front in honor of a past resident, Giuseppe Garibaldi, who was instrumental in the communication of Italy. And the concrete flint that was the base of this monument still stands, so the house has been always historically on this lot, but it has been moved to the center of the lot, which you will see in the site plan, so this is the outline of that flint. The house is situated in the middle. Also on the site, there is a, what's noted here is a cooking kettle. This was dated to the candle manufacturing that took place on this site when Antonio Meucci, who was also a historic resident of this site, lived here. There is a Meucci memorial, and the proposal is to put a metal and glass illuminated sculpture on this site at this corner as well. So I will turn the presentation over to the applicants.
My name is Joseph Shiyami. Professionally, I am Vice President for Community Relations at St. John's, where I spent the last fifty years of my life in the role of management for Vice President and now VP for Community Relations. I, in my wider involvement, have enjoyed the Sons of Italy since fifty years ago. I became Lodge President, State President, and National President. So I've known this site since 1968. This is the 100th anniversary that the Order Sons of Italy in America was given this gift by the common American community. Upon the death of Giuseppe Gattabelli, the community took care of this house, this house where Antonio Meucci did live with his wife. They were very poor people. He was emaciated with his intention for telephone, where upon a resolution some years ago by Congressman LaSella, was approved by the Congress of the United States, which said that he was the true inventor, but he didn't have the money for the patent. Meucci and the wife, or Pierre, or whatever they could, many of the community would come in, they would take out of all these metals, they, they left the house and some went to repair, and as a result, Sons of Italy founded in 1905, in 1919, inherited this beast. This all locked in with the city deeds and ownership, whatever. Fast forward, 1959, when the tax laws changed in America, the Sons of Italy in America established its Sons of Italy Foundation Inc. That foundation entered ownership of it, which then gave us a five over one status. During those early years, 59 to probably 85, there was a husband and wife who lived there with a hot stove with their little girl. They would come to the gate, they would open to the pub if they wanted to. Fast forward, 1985, and Mr. Shiyami here became the state's second Vice President. The president's assigned to be holding that place. So without a penny, I went out there, and we met a woman, May Cee Lee, archivist, curator, and we established the first exhibit that had been assembled. From that day until now, the next week, we'll tell you about the programs that we have there. I would say to you that this is an incredible gift on our 100th anniversary of ownership. This came to us through a colleague at City University. We were contacted by Giorgio Portoli and Carlo Basanti. They came to America, they flew in, they explained the plans to us, and naturally, I had to go through the process of explaining to the owners for what the Sons of Italy Foundation Inc., one wears many hats. I am the, I'm a CEO of this museum. I've had all titles there. I'm the chairman of the board, I'm a dishwasher, I do coffee pots, everybody at the board meetings, I have all the minutes. But the big thing about today, which is the start, because of the resignation of the Sons of Italy Foundation President, at a board meeting in San Diego a week ago, I was elected as the new president of the Sons of Italy Foundation. So now, I have inherited a very nice, comfortable financial position to help Sons of Italy propel it. We've received two very huge requests that we've never received in a hundred years from two Italians that would do that help. And so, that's going to make our lives formidable. I presented the entire plan to them, the board trustees, directors of the Sons of Italy Foundation adopted it at this late, and there was support from throughout the country. We're not a local organization. We are now forty thousand strong. We claim to have two hundred thousand family members. We're involved in massive charity, which is presented to Mr. Bojett Lee, a grant of two hundred thousand dollars to help rebuild a school in the Marquette region with an earthquake disaster. We are, we're doing incredible work. Our scholarship portfolio is now over a million dollars, we'll be giving out hundred thousand dollars in a few weeks. I'm very excited about it, I'm very involved with it. Because of my work, I go back and forth between Queens and Staten Island, and I would urge and respect your consideration for this wonderful gift, because I can hardly believe it's really happening, and we've gotten this far to come to you. And so I leave it to my colleagues, who I, I know they're going to give you more information. Thank you very much.
My name is Carl Caccio. I represent the Garibaldi Mucci Museum as one of its selected commissioners. Permit me this morning to share a very brief history of the museum and those who once lived there, and the reason for being here this morning. The 175-year-old cottage, now known as the Garibaldi Mucci Museum, is located in Rosebank, Staten Island. It is where the inventor Antonio Meucci resided with his wife Esther. The Order Sons and Daughters of Italy in America, for nearly 100 years, has preserved it and proudly promoted its history and many cultural and educational programs with its visitors. Antonio Meucci was a gifted genius with a highly inventive mind. Some of his inventions include a method by which wood chips could be converted to paper, a filtering system for brewing coffee, a smokeless candle wick. In 1848, Meucci also discovered that also discovered that speech could transmit through wires. He refined this discovery and created a communication device which he named teletrupano, or telephone. Interestingly, Alexander Graham Bell was not quite two years old when Miucci made his initial discovery. Miucci's wife, Esther, was a highly regarded seamstress who painstakingly created elaborate costumes by hand for theater actors. Her remains rest on the grounds of the museum. During the early eighteen fifties, then, Miucci accommodated Giuseppe Garibaldi in their quaint little cottage for nearly a year. History shows that Garibaldi was a relentless advocate for human liberty, women's emancipation, racial equality, and freedom from oppression and repression of Venice's court. He was a freedom fighter, whose battles led to the unification of Italy. A military celebrity known to President Abraham Lincoln, who invited him to serve in the Union during the American Civil War. Recently, Giorgio Portoli, a very gifted and renowned Venetian sculptor, donated to the Garibaldi Miucci Museum their nearly thirty-five-foot structure, shown here, superimposed on the property there. Here, it is, as it appears during the night when it's illuminated, this picture was taken in Padua, Italy, before it was disassembled and crated and ready to be shipped here, should we have your approval. Now, as you can see, it has a spectacular presence by day or night. Mr. Portoli created it to represent a symbol of friendship between Venice and New York by entwining two bell towers, the Bell Tower of San Marco in Venice and the Metropolitan Life Tower in New York City. On the grounds of the Garibaldi Miucci Museum, this tower would serve as a luminous beacon that would surely attract a myriad of visitors to the museum, the Rosebank community and Staten Island. Therefore, I respectfully ask for your approval to have this majestic work award permanently erected and displayed on the grounds of the Garibaldi Miucci Museum. Thank you.
Good morning, good morning. My name is Alfred Salvo, architect and also presenter here in individual, various plans and illustrations for you today. Mr. Caccio and Mr. Shiyami have both provided the permission for the overview of the Garibaldi Museum and the importance of this unique sculpture to the museum, our community, and the borough of Staten Island, which is named for two very important historical individuals who lived together, I'll leave it for a short while, in Staten Island during the nineteenth century. Now, I'd like to speak to you briefly in terms of the special qualities of this aptus obtura, which was designed by the Venetian artist, Mr. Giorgio Portoli, and its importance to the landscape of Staten Island, which we hope will one day get permanent installation for the enjoyment of all visitors to the museum. The presentation here today are photo-realistic drawings, site plan, building details, indicating the intended location and placement of this architectural sculpture, which is being gifted to the museum and is currently awaiting shipment to New York directly from Venice, where it is on public display and it has been in the enjoyment of thousands upon thousands of people visited Venice since the year two thousand. The building, on the ground, the original residence of Antonio Miucci, an individual historic landmark, will not be altered in any way, as the sculpture is positioned in such a way that it will not detract attention from the museum and other important monuments on the site. The sculpture will be erected on the northeast corner of this property, adjacent to the Tompkins Avenue entrance location. This unique, modern architectural sculpture will be visible both day and night from many vantage points, but primarily along Tompkins Avenue, a significant local commercial street on the north shore in the Rosebank section of Staten Island. Its just the position adjacent to the main entrance will be a visual beacon for all to enjoy. It will not in any way detract from the simplified Gothic profile home built around eighteen forty-five, which was once the residence of Antonio Miucci and his famous guest, Mr. Giuseppe Garibaldi. This contemporary twenty-first century sculpture will symbolically unite two great cities, New York and Venice, Staten Island in particular, where tens of thousands of Italian-American immigrants had made Staten Island their home. This iconic and transparent stainless steel and colored veranda glass sculpture measures approximately ten and a half feet in tall, and it's pitiful, which is coincidentally within the high restrictions of a structure in a predominantly residential district. It is essentially a sculpture within a sculpture, a modest-scale version of an iconic and primitive and prominent New York City landmark, the Metropolitan Life Tower, and an equally prominent Venetian landmark, the Bell Tower and St. Mark's Square, which is in fact, which was in fact the inspiration for that light building and many other prominent historical buildings throughout the world. To be clear, our office did not design this sculpture, but we are essentially design ambassadors retained by the museum to submit this proposal for your consideration and to assure that its installation complies with the necessary building, zoning, and structural requirements for New York City, and of course, your acceptance and approval. We'd be happy to answer some questions at this point.
So I just have one question. Can you just go to the site plan? Because here, you sort of see it by itself in the side of the yard. Do you kind of, in the site plan, try to understand how it's placed actually as an art gallery? Does it sort of, if it kind of aligns with the house?
It's sort of centered between two very important trees on the site, a mulberry tree, which is several steps up from the walkway, and a line of very tall oak trees that are adjacent to the park.
Can you just speak a little bit about the chosen location and how you selected your location?
Certainly. So, as I mentioned before, Tompkins Avenue is a very important commercial thoroughfare that travels east and west along Tompkins Avenue, and the positioning of the sculpture between the two trees would allow visibility, for the most part, of the sculpture and not in any way detract from the location of the house and its residents. And also too, its positioning is set back to comply with the New York City zoning regulations in terms of the setback from the front yard line, and there's plenty of setback from the side yard as well.
Can you just talk about what's going on on the rest of the site? What's the gray square for the opposite side of the walkway?
Sure. Those are existing, those that, I mean, if you follow the text that's on the property, let's see if I got those pictures that shows that. There's a, right there.
Right. I was thinking, there's like a, on the opposite side of the walkway, in the corner, there's like another rectangle that's shown as being some kind of paved thing. No, not here. You can't see it, like behind the bushes or something.
This is a statue of Garibaldi.
Oh, there it is, right there.
So, Miucci's monument is right in that rectangle?
There it is. Little red dot. Keep going. I'll find the, it's now a crosswalk.
Say it down there, okay. This is Miucci monument.
That's the gray rectangle that's at the end.
Yes, yes, yes. And in fact, this picture clearly shows that during most part of the year, which is about seven to eight months, it's replete with beautiful green foliage. And from this perspective, the monument would really be very minimally visible from this intersection of Chestnut and Tompkins Avenue.
Thank you. Any other questions? Let's see if there's any further questions or information. Is anyone who'd like to speak on this application? We do have a letter from Staten Island Community Board One recommending approval of the sculpture. Are there any final questions? Closing room? Do you have a motion to close the area? So, you know, this house is interesting. It's an earlier designation, but it is also a designation that was, probably that we designated primarily for its cultural significance. The designation, we'll talk a little bit about how the building had been relocated, it's not on its original site, and that while the form is retained, that many of its details were gone by the time of designation, but because of its associations with Garibaldi Miucci, it was considered to be significant enough to be designated for that cultural association, cultural significance. So, and there is already a memorial, and in fact, the designation report name is Garibaldi Memorial for this site. So it's, I think it's an interesting way to start and think about the appropriateness of a new memorial on the site. Who would like to start? John?
Naturally, right? The image, not that one, but the one in the opposite direction, the one that steps back so that you can see Chestnut and the, there it is. Okay. That's indeed the most prominent, there are two prominent views of this structure. This is the first one. You're coming over the crest of a hill in what looks like an industrial or railroad track, an industrial area. And this kind of opens up to your right as you approach it. So that is one of the prominent views. And as you can see, the monument does not interfere with that view of the house at all. The second prominent view is the one directly in front of it. So if you were coming from the other direction, you don't really see it until you get to, I think it's on the right, yeah, the one in the lower right there. Okay. That's the second prominent view, which is to say, because of the robe of trees behind it and the way the rest of the buildings are on that side of the street, you really don't see it until you get to that point. So basically, those two prominent views tell you that it's not, although you might think it might interfere with your view of the historic building, it doesn't at all. It's outlined with it, and in fact, I think it will just, it will draw more attention to the site as you're coming over that crest of the hill. It's kind of an interesting neighborhood because you're moving from what looks industrial and then into what becomes a very homey community with a park and church and monument, et cetera, and which was, and I think continues to be a predominantly Italian-American community. So I think it's a fantastic thing and a really effective one.
Thank you, John. Does anyone else want to follow up here?
Very nice sculpture.
Very nice. And I think, you know, it's suitable for this designation, as I said, it's really significant for this cultural significance and placed in a way that doesn't obscure any views of the house. So I think we all can recommend approval and wish you the best of luck. So thank you.
As a matter of the subject of appropriateness of Staten Island, L C C nineteen three four five four nine, four twenty Tompkins Avenue, Garibaldi Memorial Individual Landmark, the God Quagmire House, built in eighteen forty-five. The application is to install monuments and paving. I note that the Garibaldi Memorial House gave cultural significance as the residence of Giuseppe Garibaldi, who assisted in the evacuation of Italy and lived in the house from eighteen fifty-one to eighteen fifty-three, before he returned to Italy. But Garibaldi lived in a house with Antonio Miucci, inventor and candle maker, that the house fell into disrepair at the turn of the twentieth century, and lost some of its architectural details. That the house was moved from its historic location to the center of the lot based on a concrete base and encased in a concrete structure in the early twentieth century, and the concrete structure has since been removed. So I further note that Memorial Miucci was replaced in the front yard in nineteen twenty-three, and the house has burned in heat by the Order Sons of Italy in America since nineteen fifty-six. I recommend approval finding the installation of the Manizia, a New York sculpture, will not damage or obscure any significant architectural features of the building or site. But the most prominent views of the house will be preserved, particularly in the corner view of the intersection of Tompkins and Justin Avenue, that the installation will be viewed in the context of other memorials and others on the site. And then the installation will relate to the cultural significance of this landmark and to the educational mission of the historic house museum. Second.
On paper, the appearance, and that's approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Paul.
You have an open invitation to visit the museum.
Commissioners, we're going to move to the two public media meeting items in the day. The first is item number one, O C one nine dash three two six two nine, an application for certificate of residence in Borough of Manhattan, block six twenty-three, block forty-eight, two sixty-seven West Eleventh Street, the New York Historic District. The Requiem House, built in eighteen forty-three. The application is to demolish the rear house, construct a rear addition and excavate the rear yard. This was last presented at the Public hearing January eighth, twenty nineteen. No action from the public.
Good morning, Commissioners, Carol and Caccio Preservation Staff. This application was last seen at public repairing earlier this year on January eighth, which included the demolition of a one-story rear house built in the nineteen twenty, as an artist's studio, and the construction of a rear yard addition and exhumation of the rear yard. At that time, there was no support from Commissioners to demolish the rear house and requested additional information regarding occupants and how this rear house compared to other rear houses in the district in terms of fabric and materials. In response to your comments, the app then has returned and is now proposing to retain the existing one-story rear house and to alter the existing and enlarged existing openings, as well as create new openings at the front or the side basements of the house, and alter a portion of. At the front of the rear house, seen here, they're proposing to remove these four existing windows, create a new enlarged opening, and install an operable glazing system within that new opening. And at this area of the roof, they're proposing to create a new opening to install the scaly. At the rear side basements, they're proposing to alter enlarged select window openings and doors, and create new openings to install multi-layered windows and doors. And then finally, to excavate below the rear yard and the existing rear house. And so the architect must sub-design rooms and the storage facilities. I'm sorry, there is our prepared questions.
Okay, so I think you're right. I think it's fantastic that they have responded to our comments and retained the back house, but there is a new design for the back house, so I'd like to go over the proceedings and let the others speak to that.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mary Dirks, the Preservation Consultant for this project, and with me is Jill Soo, the architect from Soo Design. We didn't really talk that much about the, I'm trying to get this back, about the house when we were first discussing this. And let's see if we can get the conditions page. This is the rear house, built in nineteen twenty-four. The side and rear walls are relatively intact, as far as we know. The front has been altered a lot. The windows have been replaced, simple stucco, stucco's painted, the peat roof is asphalt, not a lot of special materials. In the front, the front has been covered with a cement board that has been in stucco, so the front has been altered fair enough, and also covered with some, some twenty-first century chisaw detail. So this building has had a lot, this simple building has had a lot of alterations. I think that's really everything I wanted to say on this. So it's up now to, go to the three.
Good morning, Commissioners. So the goal of the design always was to try and bring some connection, you know, there after a rear house has been used as a re-controlled house for many, many decades, right, was to try and bring usability of the space here. The original presentation was to try and bring this mass adjacent to the existing townhouse. Respect the Commissioners. With respect to Commissioners' guidance and movement, we went back to drawing board and made it very clear internally that, okay, we're going to keep the, the massing of this house. So what we're proposing to the left is exactly the same massing as the existing rear house right now. We felt that it was very important, especially for, we'll just call them public views or the donut views, to maintain certainly this, the appearance of this facade, the rear facade. Keeping in mind that there's, there is an eight-foot fence right here right now, that most rear houses, Garibaldes, go all the way to the rear property line. Somehow this was sited with, with kind of a three-eight-foot pocket of space that is just derelict and, and hard to maintain. And it is a mess all the time. So.
Is this the new structure you're going to make?
No. We're, we're going to.
Can you alter one?
We're just, we're going to alternate and renovate the existing, the existing structure. So one of the, the big things that we wanted to do to try and, again, connect the two houses together so that the owner of this house could actually use the rear house in a nicer way. One of the things was to lower the grade. Right now, if you come out from, from this room into this small dark courtyard, you come around, you take steps up, and then you go into that little side door. And then, and that grade level is the same all the way at the back. So you saw those tiny windows on the lower half of the rear, of the rear elevation that are just not that usable and that they don't pretty much light or bear into the space at all. What we're proposing actually is to flatten the lower grade from here and even, even out the grade all the way around the rear house. So we're going to effectively lower that so that it exposes more of the rear house. The idea being that once you go from this level, you go through the corridor, you go straight in, you go straight out. So that even though, we're going to maintain that kind of strange eight-foot slice in the back, at least we'll make it usable again. You know, and, and that was a really big feature that we wanted to try and bring back and connect the two houses here. We will reestablish the grade back here. So instead of having the steps here that go into the house, we'll put them right back here at the end of that, that little aisle there, which I think is nice and tough to light. So, again, trying to maintain the rear facade as possible, these three window openings on the top are, are going to be unchanged. We will replace windows to get them to be a little bit more like, this one currently is, is something completely different. These two look somewhat similar. We'll rebuild the skylight studio. We don't really know what the original roofing material was, but we'll, staff will try to find appropriate material. But again, certainly from here up, and again, remember that there's a fence line here. It will maintain its, its state of appearance. So again, this is where we're proposing to drop the grade. So in doing so, we want to, we're proposing to enlarge these openings. Something like that. Right now, these openings do not align with the upper levels, so we'd like to align them. And then again, on the side elevation, that's existing door right now, there's an existing window and a two right here. Again, we might just, we're proposing to add, instead of the door, because we'll be entering from the front, we're proposing six windows. Again. And again, the, you know, there's already an existing language of class on the existing townhouse. We would be reconfiguring this a little bit to, so that it's more of the stable category. So this side and that side kind of feeds each other and that's the idea here. And it was also very important to show that even that roof edge up to this point, right here, we're proposing to, you know, again, yes, there's a lot of glazing, but we wanted to maintain that, that roof edge. But again, certainly from the, from the outside appearance, that we're still going to maintain the original pattern.
Are there any questions? I do want to just go through the record that we did receive some great comments objecting to the amount of glazing.
So, yeah, we just do want to say that this is pretty much visible just from the house or fences. It, it's not going to be very, it will be visible, but not very visible even from the neighbors, and it isn't visible from the street.
Yeah, there's a, right now, from this neighbor's side, there's a, there's a very large tree. And then there's also a eight-foot chain link fence that doesn't belong to our client. So again, the digital, I think, is.
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you for this question, John. Would anyone like to start with this one? I think it's, you know, bathroom approved by retaining the back house, which is, you know, happy to be a significant, I think, sort of question really is, is all remaining amazing. Particularly, I think, it's really on the side of the faces of the house, the other opening seemed to be consistent with existing neighbors. It's like a question of the scale of the openings and its connection to the skylight and the situation. So, anyone have any thoughts on that? Everybody okay? Because of its limited visibility, it's almost, the skylight is popular with the arts, art infancy, I suppose. Okay. And related to the rear facade.
Regarding 267 West 11th Street, District. The application is to construct a rear addition and excavate the rear yard. I note that according to South County Executive, he also runs features that continues to the special architecture, Mr. Park and Director of South District, that was, and that's the rear house. It's built as a one-story artist studio in 2020. Here it offers significant during rentability, during which rentability was given to many books, artists residing in work in the district. I recommend that the approval finding the rear house featuring pink steper plating and gable roof with studio windows in origin, basic armor simply designed, plenty minimal and natural natural features. Therefore, opposed alterations from not diminishing the special architectural or Mr. Park of the signature structure, but that placing window, studio window in mind that door will preserve the significant feature. The new conscious openings featuring multi-layered window and door systems, which consistent with certain frustration, kind of building studio with the skylight, opposed alterations to accommodate the new glaze, which would be front spoken to minimal, thereby making the original lock of the house. The skylight approved will be set within the roof, it will not attract a building or streetscape in terms of visibility. And that below grade escalation, the interior ground house, you then comply with the apartment building regulations under the Super Regionalized Special Engineer or Architect to protect the building's facade and adjacent buildings.
On paper. Any opinions?
For the last item of the day, it's called meeting item number two, LPC 19-33966. An application for certificate of appropriate visitor of Brooklyn, block 764, lot 16, 1301 Surf Avenue, Comming Island Theater, later short theater building, individual landmark. Neo-Lisson Survival South Theater and Office Building, shined by Riley Paul, 1945. The application is to alter facades and rooftops, replacing the store front fill, remove fire stairs, install canopies and signage. This is last presented at the public hearing January 15th, 2019, and no action presented by the document.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, a New York Preservation Staff. This application is at the Comming Island Theater Building, later the Shore Building, which is at the northwest corner of Surf and Stillwell Avenues. It was first heard on January 15th of this year. At that hearing, Commissioners expressed a consensus of support for alterations to the roof, construction of bulkheads, installation of store front windows, removal of the fire stairs, and the installation of canopies and signage. However, the Commissioners expressed concerns on the glass brick beams of the purpose being set back, the presence of signage being more reflective of Comming Island atmosphere, and better recalling the topology of the theater building, atmosphere, theater extension. So here we have previously proposed and currently proposed. The current proposal sets back the glass brick from the original brick parapet up here. It retains the existing fire doors while removing this fire stair to reduce safety hazards. It installs a metal framing, sort of recalling the original fire stair, as well as introducing some staining on the brick to further outline that historic shape. As some variable signage at the canopy exits here and under the marquee, and also creates a larger presence of signage here. This was previously a strike pattern and is now a level with a variable sign. And there's some further details showing that we've altered. They're also proposing a variable outline in between the ground floor and second floor. And the addition of showing where retail signage will go in the future, just sort of add to the topology.
Is it intended that those red light bulb boxes above the canopies are going to frame signage?
I believe that is, so there, there is a future of zoning concern with, with this regarding signage, and I believe it would be best for the applicants to speak to that. I don't have the, the technical knowledge, but that detail, the details regarding the signage and the exceptions that would be needed from this agency are outlined in the code regulations at the end of the proposal. And so I think that some are noting that some maybe there's a little signage that we would like to follow up question to ask in terms of intent for these spaces. And then this, this little detail showing the glass brick set back to, to receive from the original profile. And these red brick squares that are shown to sort of break up the, the larger point facade are taken directly from this historic rendering, which was never built as, as shown, but shows the original design to check out the articulation there.
And I think, you know, first of all, I would say that this building has been empty for many, many years. And I think that we all really embraced a new use here and a new use that almost fits through the real lines with some modest additions. And so I think, you know, we'd love to see this adaptive reuse be successful, but we did have some concerns. We wanted that, that theater wall to be more articulated, to really kind of evoke what it was. And so suggested that the glass brick be set back and that some articulation be provided on the facade. And unusually for us, we suggested that the signage be more bold and Comming Island like and less restrained. And so I think that the, the lighted sign on the corner and the lights are trying to address that. And so why don't we have the applicants speak directly to how they, or how they respond to our comments?
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioners. We'll try to make it as brief as possible. The issue that we ran into with respect to signage is that there are zone limitations to 150 square feet of signage, of which 150 square feet of signage may be clipped, and that's on two to two facades of, of the building. So what we decided to do is in response to adding more vitres and articulation and signage to the perimeter of the building, what we chose to do is create a decorative element, which in fact can accommodate a tenant's signage or be tenant's signage. However, because we're only restricted to the E2 square feet that we've got left over on this facade, the E2 square feet of signage can be placed inside, I'm sorry, the E2 square feet of signage can be placed inside the, each of the decorative elements that we see here. And the challenge that we had with respect to play sign is in fact, we wanted to replicate a play sign that was originally lost in Sandy a number of years ago. However, this has to be considered architectural detail, and we have to have the support of the LPC in order to have this approved by the DOB. If this is considered a play sign, it will not be, it will not be allowed. If this is considered architectural detail and is supported by LPC and the findings, then in fact, we will be able to install the sign as you requested. As far as some of the articulation is concerned, you can see here, as far as the frames, the decorative frames, exposed lamps, and that's the, that's the entire building, just an indication of the exposed walls on the shore of the south side of the, of the, sort of the most of these things have it quickly. And do I have anything else to ask, or to answer to you?
Any questions?
I have a question. When you were putting the decorative bulbs in above the, the, did you explore what lining it up with windows?
They are actually, that, that's the, what we did with each of the decorative frames that you can see here are lined up with the, the bays of, of the windows. And that's true also for the historic portion of the facade as well. As you can see here.
They're wider than, but centered on?
Yes, they're wider than the center. There is one tie that's not, that's where the marquee and the, the original marquee and, well, the body marquee now appears with one of the signs on the far left hand side of that retail facade.
Any other questions? Okay, so we'll move into our discussion.
Yes, Michael?
I think it's great. I think that, that, I think that, I hope the applicant feels that it's improved. I certainly do. I think that it's got a much stronger tie to its historic presence on the street. I think, I wish these stair expressions were a bit more robust and a little less skeletal, but I think that it's appropriate, I said. I think the addition of panels on the sidewall is, is a really very welcome one. And to the extent that the detail, that I can assist them and get it around and the DOB restriction, I'm happy to call that in on the corner if it's architectural detail and endorse it as appropriate. I, I also think the light bulbs are kind of, I think, a good request. I go, I, I accept as well.
Please.
Now, just, I agree with Michael. I think that I would, yeah, I believe that the bulb that are there on the, on the island light, but I think that the improvement over last night, I would certainly support the applicant.
Thank you. Do you want to say one other thing? I actually think it instructs a very nice balance between you're trying to convey, you know, certain kind of image of the town and connecting to the history of Comming Island. I mean, this building signage is really wonderful. And I think that also just straddles that line in a very, very nice way to tie them to. Yeah, I actually think it strikes a very nice balance between you're trying to convey, you know, certain kind of image of itself and connecting to the history, um, of Comey Island. And this building, uh, signage is really wonderful. And I think that also just straddles that line in a very, very nice way to tie them to, again, you know, uh, the theater, uh, the theater zone for the building. I think it's a very nice job. And the side of the building, I think you handle very well also. All right, great. So I think to that, a little emotion to, to, to.
In the matter of thirteen months, our passionate Comey Island creator, making sure the building, individual landmark. An application to alter facades and rooftops, replace windows and storefronts, build, remove fire stairs and install canopies and signage, I recommend approval. Finding that the bulbs were facilitated to have the reuse of this historic building due to building for hotel and retail purposes and will restore the public access to this prominent individual landmark. That the removal of modern storefront infill and climbing will not eliminate any significant architectural features of the building. The removal of the historic fire stairs, which are deteriorated and will no longer be required for this new use of the building, will address an existing safety issue and coincide with the replacement of the pace break throughout the facade to which it is attached. That the proposed decorative brickwork at the Stillwell Avenue facade will be keeping with the treatment of sidewalls seen in historic renderings around the other period of favorite buildings. That the artistic interpretation of the fire stair will evoke the historic fire stair in service and reminder of the original use of the building. That the alterations to the main roof, including the installation of glass windscreen, will not call undue attention to itself and will not detract from the distinctive silhouette of the roof line. That raising the parapets of the rear theater extension in conjunction with raising the height and changing the profile of the theater roof will not eliminate any significant architectural features and will maintain the characteristics of subservient secondary facade. That the proposed glass brick at the eastern and north parapets of the rear theater extension will be set back from the existing parapet, thereby maintaining the historic profile proportions and details of the subservient secondary facade. That the proposed storefronts and base infills of the main tower will be consistent with the treatment of basic buildings at this scale, size, and age, and will harmonize with the design in terms of design materials, details, and proportions. That the installation of new storefronts at the Stillwell Avenue facade to the rear theater extension will not remove any significant architectural features and will unify the basic building by replying in proportion to materials and details of the store storefront openings and infill at the ground floor of the tower. That replacing deteriorated sections of terraced G F R C that matches the details of color and texture of the terraced will not be noticeable because of, of its height on the building, and the substitute material will be better able to withstand the harsh marine fire. That the proposed change in window material from wood to metal will then restore the material of the infill of the ground floor will be barely perceptible from the public thoroughfares and will be in keeping with the infill with windows already historically found in buildings at this time, size, and age. That the change in operation of the center portion of the monumental windows of the second floor from six over six double long windows to twelve light fixed windows will only minimally change the profile of the window while maintaining the aesthetic configuration of lights. That the installation of metal and glass canopy at the ground floor of the Surf Avenue facade will be in keeping with the historic presence of the prominent marquee of this facade and will not detract from the secondary architectural features of the building. That the proposed metal canopy at the ground floor of the Stillwell Avenue facade will be simply designed and well scaled for the entrance. That the proposed exposed vault will eliminate the signage at the Surf Avenue marquee and above the canopy of the Stillwell Avenue facade and the lighting scheme, including the installation of light fixtures and corners of storefront openings, and that the window framing will not detract from the architectural features of the building and will be in keeping with the character of the streetscape, surrounding atmosphere of the adjacent amusement park. And the proposed multi-story sign in the southeast corner will be in keeping with the historic signage of the building in terms of material, size, and scale. Hold please. Sorry, I ran away with my stuff.
I saw you running off the track.
Hold. And then the proposed multi-story sign in the southeast corner will return an important architectural detail and will be in keeping with the historic signage of the building in terms of material, scale, and placement.
On favor? Can you oppose? Thank you. It's approved. Good luck to you.